I really appreciate the opportunity to share with you or to continue our series. Sister Waters, I really appreciate the fact that you took on the mantle to do the moderation for this evening. And for all of us who are here, this, this evening, welcome. So we are at the fourth lesson or the final series. It's the final part in the, the month-long series of lessons. And it has truly been a delightful experience and for me, and I trust it is also for you. This evening, I, I can't help but reflect on the fact that last week this time, we were just experiencing the tail end of the storm. Only to, to wake up to a, a very uncomfortable reality for those of us who are here in Jamaica. Not all of us are inconvenient. Not all of us are inconvenient. The fact that we are here online is testament to the fact that we are on the better end, at least physically, emotionally we may not be because all of us have been affected in one way or the other. Jamaica is a small country, so we have either some family member who work a friend church. You know, the, the association has churches in the West and so many of them today are in situations where they have some damage with a roof or to the structure itself. And then the members of the church also are affected. So we continue to pray. And I know there is some effort to bring assistance to those who we can help. And so I know in the coming days, we will be called upon to do a little bit more to assist. But it, I said to the folks at Fairview and Sunday, Reverend Edwards would have asked me to engage in this study from somewhere about January or February. Very, very, very early, maintaining Christian virtues in trying times. And I said to them, it seemed as if he had some insights into what was, was to come. Because we are indeed in some trying times. Last time when we spoke, we, we, we spoke in relation to, you know, what does trying times mean for us? And we didn't know that we'd be going through what we have today. But this situation is indeed trying. And so we pray for God's help. We pray for God's just mighty rescue plan. Reverend Edwards, I'm going to ask you to give me permission to share. Just, just God's mighty hand. It, it's going to be a difficult couple of months to come, years to come. Because of my job, I sometimes drive to some of these communities. And so when, when they describe what Allan Bamba was like, I could relate because my mind's eye, I am driving through what I know Allan Bamba to look like. And just imagining all of those trees, the branches intertwine and what it meant to cut through that. And based on the top part of the area, there is almost a pool that the world creates because of the bamboo trees on either side. And that's just a small portion. It, it, it is tough. I remember visiting one school last year, C and C Moderation in Central Elizabeth, Monroe to be specific. And the teacher telling me that it was tough, you know, and losing his roof. Another colleague, you know, describing how the winds would have taken up a trailer path with car parts and throwing it to the other side of the road. And now the same parish going through even worse. So we pray. And with prayer, we work. So those of us who can, you know, we go out there and we do our best to assist. And that's what we do in trying times. We maintain who we are as Christians. And we provide comfort to those who are in tough times or going through difficult times. The Bible says that we are light, we are salt. Amen? So in recapping very quickly, we spoke about what is virtue, the difference between moral and Christian virtue. And virtue in the context of history itself and the usage of it. We spoke in relation to what is theological, theological understanding of Christian virtue. And how we can apply Christian virtue in living a Christ-like life. That's what we focused on the last time. And just a quick run through here, when we talk about virtue, we say it is a trait of excellence. Including, you know, moral, social or intellectual excellence, that is. And it's a, it's a, it's something that has to be cultivated. It's something that has to be, has to go through a period of refinement. And then we would have used the Bible to drive home the point. And when we ask the question in, in, in the Gospels of the account of the good Samaritan. And Jesus asks a question of the three, who would have been perceived to be the most virtuous towards a man that was robbed? And of course, we know who that was. At least the last time we met, we spoke in relation to what characteristics are not virtuous. And we started out by defining, at least in the context of the Bible, what words like iniquity and sin and transgression meant. And he would have indicated that they were opposite to, I think I jumped past a slide, but this is where it is at. I misplaced it. It, it, it each refers to a different way in which we break God's laws. Sin, we talk about, it is missing, missing the mark. It's described as moral failure. When we talk about transgression, it's breaking of trust, betraying the trust within the confines of a relationship. And iniquity being bent or crooked. And each of these words describe how we violate God's law in relation to how we treat each other and ultimately. Going back to virtue, we mentioned that when we speak about virtue, the Bible describes in 1 Corinthians, chapter three, love. But in going through the explanation, it says that faith, hope and love abounds. And the greatest of our three is love. I often say to persons that, you know, it is very well-positioned that, that the Bible would have organized, been organized in such a way that before it moves into describing the gifts of the Spirit, it treats with, it treats with love. Because any gift that is being used or any talent or any gifting that is being used without love really is or could be an instrument or weapon that can be so destructive. And so love must underpin anything that we have to do. And so all of this is based in the fruit of the Spirit. Love, goodness, kindness, gentleness, faithfulness, self-control, patience, peace, joy. And we said that these are considered to be virtues. Amen? One fruit with different pegs, as it were. And then we mentioned in our last session that if we, if we think about those characteristics that are not virtuous. The Bible describes in Proverbs, chapter six and verse 16. Seven things that the Lord hates or are considered to be detestable. Artie eyes, lying tongue, hands that shed innocent blood, heart that devise wicked and devices, divisive imagination. Quick feet that are quick in running to do mischief, a false witness that speaketh lies. And seven, one that sows discord among the brethren. And so we use lastly the account in the book of Matthew in focusing on the Beatitudes. And quoting from Dr. Lloyd Jones in describing the sermon, the sermon on the mount. And in particularly the, the Beatitudes, he describes them as a stair step. And said that the first four leads us to the mountain top. You know, being poor in spirit, blessed are those who mourn, those who are meek, those who hunger after righteousness. It's, it's these things that prepare us as we climb up to the mountain top. But as we come down to do ministry, as God bless us, enable us with these gifts, with these special characteristics. As we come down, it is, it is those characteristics that enable us to be merciful, pure in art, to become peace makers. That's what it means to be virtuous. You know, the actions being played out. And what we want to focus on tonight is the last bit that says, you know, blessed are those who are persecuted for righteousness sake. When we talk about being persecuted, it's, it comes in different ways. You know, sometimes it's just being simply ostracized because of your own value judgment. Or it may lead to one losing their, their life or limb because of their belief. Or what it is to live in a time like this in integrity, when so much devastation is around. And then things will be coming and some will be said, they don't get any yet. After they would have collected five packages already and start piling them. What does it mean to live virtuous even in a time like this? And so when the Bible says to us in Matthew, chapter five and verse 10, blessed are those who are persecuted for righteousness sake, for there is the kingdom of heaven. What does that mean for those of us living here and now? And why take such an unpleasant subject? Why would Jesus enunciate or suggest this for those who are going to live godly? It says here, because if we understand the inevitability and the purpose and the fruit of suffering for Christ, it, it, it is the resources that gives, that he gives us to face it. So he gives us the enabling to face whatever is coming. And we'll be in a better position to be able to endure what, what comes. There are so many who find it difficult to believe that God is truly God or God is loving when it comes to times like these. And they often ask themselves the question, how could a good God allow what is happening? But I often say to persons that if we think about who God uses to show that he is good, that he is kind, it is us who, as human beings. Sometimes the very unpleasantness that we experience in this life, it really comes at, at the hand of another human being. And either one who would have committed the act or one who stands in silence to ignore what is being, what is taking place. And so we have a responsibility wherever we are to speak out against the injustices that we see and to do something about it, even if it means that we would lose our own lives. And so John Sod has pointed out that persecution is simply the clash between two irreconcilable value systems that clashes. And, and so when he described the clash, he says, it's ultimately those who believe, trust and love God, the God of the Bible and those who do not. That's where the clash comes in. Two opposing worldviews contending. Jean Edwards Ziff says this, he says, one of the greatest paradoxes in Christian history is that the church is most pure in times of cultural hostility, right? And it goes a little further to say that when Christianity sees identical, when Christianity seems identical with culture. And even when the church seems to be enjoying its greatest earthly success, then it is weakest. Conversely, or in opposition, no, it says, when the church encounters hardship, persecution and suffering, then it is closest to its crucified Lord. When they are, they are fewer hypocrites, fewer nominal believers among its ranks, among its members. When the, the, the faith of Christian burns most intense. It is in this time that the faith of Christian burns most intensely. And so we would often hear the saying, and we'll come to it, that the, it is the, 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 the blood of the, the church that watered it. And so when we think about blessed we are when we are persecuted for righteousness sake. It is something that in our own way, in our own lived experiences, we have to stand strong in naming and, and walking the, the Christian walkway. Matthew would have said this near the end of the Beatitude, that, that discourse in chapter five and verse 44. He says, love your enemies and pray for those who persecute you. He is clearly saying here that persecution was a real possibility for anybody who followed Jesus Christ. And he was teaching them a, a vital lesson that joy, love and, and forgiveness were a way, the pathway of responding when you would have encountered things of this nature. We don't live in a country that is highly abrasive to Christian ideology. We, 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 we live in a, in a country where we often boast that we live in a, a Christian country. But each and every day, there are persons who are becoming more and more aggressive towards the Christian worldview, whether in, in relaxing what is considered to be, you know, things that were offensive in the past. As it relates to rights and privileges, as it relates to, you know, abortion. In, in, in our own parliament now, there was the, the discussion around the abolition of the Obi-Wan law, you know, and easing of things that were considered to be offensive. What do we do as a Christian community? We have to stand strong. And so the Bible talks about rejoice in that day and live for joy. For behold, your reward is great in heaven for those, sorry, for so their fathers or their fathers did to the prophets. And the Bible says in John, chapter 15 and verse 20, remember the words that I say to you. The servant is not greater than his master. And so Jesus would have said, if they persecute me, they will also persecute you. If they keep my, if, if they, which is you and me, if we keep his words, they will also keep yours. And so it's an encouragement to remind us that just as though Jesus and the prophets of all suffered, bear many punishment and misfortune. We too have that to face, maybe in a small dose, maybe in a large dose. But regardless of the dosage, we remain strong. Jesus would have impressed on the heart of the writer, the book of Matthew. Sorry, Mark in chapter eight, verse 34 and 38 to 38. He says, calling to the crowd and to him with his disciples, he said to them, if anyone would come after me, let him deny himself and take up his cross and follow me. For whosoever do save his life will lose it and whosoever loses his life for my sake. And the Gospels will save it. For what does it profit a man to gain the whole world and forfeit its soul? Or what, or what can a man give in return or exchange, I think the King James says, for his soul? For whatever or, or whoever is ashamed of me and my words in this adulterous and sinful generation of him will the son of man also be ashamed when he comes into glory of his father with the angels? So, so it's, it's saying to us that there is a, a method to maintain one's Christian virtue, way of life, worldview in this world, right? C.S. Lewis says this, those who suffer the same things from the same people, for the same person can scarcely not love each other. So there is a commonality that we, we will encounter. And so in describing the, 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 the pattern that Jesus laid out here in Mark, chapter eight, in terms of, you know, denying oneself and taking up the cross. It, it's, it's, it's something that we can, we can follow. We can pattern in order to live out the Christian experience in a, in the face of trying times. Now church, this is not easy. And if we, if we think about what is here, it says first, first condition Jesus gave is to come after him. So it describes leaving your comfort zone. I, I, I think of Abraham. When, when, when God said to him, leave your kindred in, in Genesis, chapter 12. Leave your kindred. I'm going to lead you into a land that you know not of. It was a requirement to let go of the things that you would have depended on for a long time, for life, for, for success. And trust me, the same call today. You know, Jesus says here, and this is one of the conditions, come after him. Second condition is deny yourself whatever your will would want. You're saying no to it. The Bible describes it as, you know, crucifying one's flesh. Third condition, to take up your cross. Now, if, if we think about the cross as a physically what it meant to carry a cross, the cross was a dreaded instrument that the Romans used for persecution, for showing to those who would have stepped out of line, how they would bring the entire society back in line. And so it was something that was used openly to bring restraint. And just the sheer weight of a cross, you know, can't be easy to even carry. So when the Bible said, take up your cross, it, it wants us to understand, if we're using symbolic language, that it's something heavy, that is something that brings open shame and disgrace. It is something that causes complete stress. And so Jesus would have said in, in closing off, in his, in his warning, he says, gee, that, that he warns us that, that persecution and suffering will come or may come as in our earthly ministry. You know, as we engage in teaching, preaching, going out there witnessing. You know, there are others who sometimes see what we do as terrible, you know, they think that what we do is a waste of time. And so the criticisms are not easy to deal with. Sometimes we spend hours preparing for an evangelistic meeting and with money, time, personnel and so on. And the results sometimes are very dismal, very disappointing, but we keep moving. That's what it means to take up your cross. And this is not something when you, you do because it is favorable for a season. We do it even in unfavorable conditions. We continue to push the cross, take up our cross. In the upper room, Jesus told the disciples in John 15 and verse 20, we read, remember the words that I have said to you, the servant is not greater than his master. If they persecute me, they will also persecute you. So this is just a reinforcement. It was, it was not easy sailing. We have a situation, even when Jesus was faced with the, 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 being placed on the cross, he would have uttered the words, let me scope pass from you. We're talking about the Savior of the world. And so the warning was specifically intended to keep his followers from losing their faith in the fires of persecution that would soon come their way, that they would soon encounter. And if we think about the lessons that we can pull from the, the early church fathers, and there are many. It was fierce lessons that we can even use today to encourage ourselves Um, lessons that we can even use today to encourage ourselves. As we pledge allegiance to Christ and the gospel constantly. You know, um, if we think about the challenges with our children, the challenges at work. The challenges even with church people, the challenges in our community. It require standing up and we prepare ourselves to do that on a daily basis. Amen? To love each other, to to love the neighbor who is not so kind, you know. To be an example in the workplace or in the classroom environment. Or on the side of the road, wherever we are. The the Christian community of the day would have experienced severe persecution. You know, the Bible tells us in Hebrews that there were some who were so sun asunder. They were ravaged by wild animals and so on, but they maintained their faith. Um. And so we can look at examples of the early church. Um, those days when we describe the church as being spirit-filled. I don't believe that we are less than the church of that day. Amen? Um. It means that we have to um find grounding. And be a people of resolve. Um. Soon after Jesus ascended to heaven. Um. The account tells us through the history books that persecution broke out against the the church in Jerusalem. Because of their preaching um about Jesus Christ and about his resurrection. Who says specifically that in Acts chapter four, verse one through to twenty twenty two. Um. In the book of Acts, again, in chapter seven, we read about the stoning of of Stephen. Um, to the point of death for preaching about Jesus Christ. Um. Acts eight talks about the fact that there was great persecution. Um directed against the church in Jerusalem and everyone um expected. Suspected um of being an apostle. And wherever they went, they faced that kind of persecution. Um. When we go to Acts chapter twelve, it tells us that Eret killed James. Um, and the brother of John was arrested, the brother of John, sorry. And and also Peter was a ju- uh uh was arrested. Um, because of their stance for Jesus Christ. Um. And there are many that we can we can point to. I'm going to just invite us to go to. Um Saint John, chapter sixteen, um sixteen and verse one through to four. The the Bible says, I have said these things to you to keep you from falling away. So 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 if if the if Jesus is saying to the disciples of the day, I'm telling you these things. So that you don't fall away. It's like preparing us for what is to come. You know, the Bible talks about remaining resolute in difficult times. You know, there are people who are today questioning, as I said before. If a good God could allow a hurricane of this magnitude. To hit communities that were already at a very impoverished point. And, you know, causing people to lose their roof, their their livelihood. Why would God allow that, you know? But for those of us who are Christian, it means that. We trust God's hand wherever comes our way, whether it be, you know. Through the hands of another person or through the hands of natural disaster, we trust God. That he he has a purpose for all that is happening. It continues to to say here that they will put you out of the synagogue. Indeed, oh, it's coming when whoever kills you. Um, will think of you as offering service to God. They will do these things because they have not known the Father nor me. But I have said these things to you that you. That we, when the hour comes, we will remember. Um, that we were, that he told us about this. Amen? Um, I did not say these things to you from the beginning because. I was with you. So Jesus was saying to the disciples that. I'm preparing you because I am leaving. I was with you, so. There was not reason to say, but now that I'm leaving. And so we don't have the physical presence. Right? The bodily form of Jesus with us today. We have the indwelling power of the Holy Spirit. Reminding us constantly that we are to live virtuously in this world. Um. And so when we think about about those who were martyred for the gospel's sake. Um, it bears for us lessons even today. Um, what lessons can we learn um from it to to be lessons to the of being committed? Um, regardless of what is happening, um, that we should love Christ. All through what we encounter, what we experience, to sustain our faith. Says that persecution in some form is guaranteed for the Christians. Today, there are Christians in Nigeria that are being persecuted because. Of their religious disposition, right? Um. Acts nine. And verse fifteen to sixteen says, but the Lord said to him, go. For he is a chosen instrument of mine to carry my name before the Gentiles and kings. And the children of Israel. I will show him how much he must suffer. For the sake of my name. That was, you know, the the word to Paul. As he was now following Christ, going a little bit further in um. Chapter fourteen, verse twenty two, it says, strengthen the souls of the disciples, encouraging them to continue in their faith. And saying that through many tribulation, you must enter the kingdom of God. Frightening words, difficult words, but things to bear in mind. And as I said last week, or the last time we met, um, trying times mean different things, you know. Um, what 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 do we do when we get sick? And it appears as if there is no relief coming soon. Do we curse God? Or do we maintain our faith, understanding that while the body perishes. The soul lives in honor and glory to God. So we strengthen. Our souls, strengthen our spirit. Um. Second Corinthians, chapter eleven. And verse twenty three, um, describes. Paul giving an account of what he went through as an apostle, as a child of God. Um. It says, I am better, I am a better one. I am talking like. A madman, um, with far. Greater labors, far more imprisonment, with countless beatings. Often near death. And then he 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 start to make some account, he says, five times. I have at the hand of the Jews and forty losses less. One, three times I was beaten with rods. Once I was stoned, three times I was shipwrecked. Night and a day I was adrift at sea. Ah, frequent journeys in dangers from rivers. Danger from robbers, danger from my own people, danger from the Gentiles, danger. In the city, danger in the wilderness, in the sea. From false brethren or brothers, in toil, in hardship. Through many asleepless nights, in hunger and thirst, often without food. In cold and exposure. That's Paul talking about, you know. What he endured being a man of God. He goes on to say, um. And apart from other things, there is the daily pressure of me and my anxiety. For all the churches. So so coupled with the physical things that he goes through. He had the 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 anxiety of, you know, thinking about the church and its well-being. Um, whether it would maintain its integrity in the face of what was coming. Um. So so we we those of us who are here can relate. Because while not all of us are active ministers. We all share in the leadership of the church in one way or the other. And that too comes with its fair share of anxiety. When we are falling outs, when there are difficult things to deal with. Do we just throw in the towel and walk away? Or do we come together? And put through the difficult times. Um. Galatians two. And verse twenty says, I have been crucified with Christ. It is no longer I who live. But Christ who lives in me. So if we are truly walking according to God's will and his grace. We recognize that we're not walking alone. Amen? Amen? Somebody? In in the book of Isaiah, Isaiah spoke about that, you know, when we go through the fire, that he will be there. When we go through the storms, the the waters, he would be there. That's the commitment, the Bible says. That he is given the name Jesus Christ, Emmanuel, God with us. So he doesn't abandon us in the face of difficulties. He is with us. Bless God. And says, and the life I now live in the flesh, I live by faith in the Son of God. Who loves me and gave himself for me. So we live in faith. These are a couple of other scriptures that we can reflect on. Um. Driving on the point of what it means to to live a godly life. Even the face of challenges, Romans twelve and verse fourteen. Um. We can look at second Timothy three, um, verse um, ten to twelve. Let me just ask somebody to read that one, second Timothy, um, three, verse ten to twelve. Will will they have permission to to speak?
They can unmute. You can unmute themselves.
Yeah, so let me just ask somebody to read that one for me. Second Timothy, um, chapter three, verse ten through to twelve. All right, don't they don't fall asleep on me. We are just trying to find it.
Good evening, I can read it.
Good, good evening, thanks. Go ahead, please.
Okay, second Timothy three, verses ten to twelve. But thou hast fully known my doctrine, manner of life, purpose, faith, long suffering, charity, patience. Persecutions, afflictions, which came unto me at Antioch, at Iconium. At Lystra, what persecutions I endured. But out of them, all the Lord delivered me. Yea, and all that. Will live godly in Christ Jesus shall suffer persecution.
All who will live godly.
Yes, all. My answer is that, but yeah.
Yeah, uh that sounds like a leaker.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Um. So it's an encouragement, all who will live godly. Will suffer some trying times, will suffer persecution, will go through some challenges. Life is filled with challenges. Amen? We don't like to say it, but that's the reality. And so Jesus has laid out a recipe. For how we should live our lives. Amen? Now, in second Corinthians, second. Um, Timothy, chapter four, um, verse. Let me look at verse six and eight, all right? It says. For I am already being poured out as a drink offering. And the time of my departure has come. Verse seven says, I have fought a good fight. I have finished the race. I have kept the faith henceforth. There is laid up for me a crown of righteousness, which the Lord, the righteous judge. Will award to me on that day. And not only me. But also to all who have loved his appearing. Um. If we jump down to verse seventeen of that same um book and chapter. It says, but the Lord stood by me and strengthened me so that through me the message. Might be fully proclaimed and all the Gentiles might hear. So I was rescued from the lion's mouth. So there is a a situation, by the time we get to verse eighteen, it says, the Lord will rescue me. From every evil deed and bring me safely into his heavenly kingdom. To him be glory forever and ever. So there is the the commitment that Christ makes to us. That he is standing with us. And when we move from this life to the next. We have a guarantee of his promise that we'll be with him in the kingdom of heaven. Amen? So it is a faith work that has some guar- has its guarantees here and now. And but also guarantees when we move from this life to the next. Um. As we talk about what the early church encountered, um. The the Bible talks about the fact that, you know, it's same here in chapter four. Of um second Timothy, verse seventeen, that the Lord stood by him to strengthen him. Paul, Paul here is describing the time during Nero's rule. Um, when there was open um persecution of the church, right? When it came to, as he said, when it came to to the time of his his death, he was still confident of his faith. He was still expectant in his hope. And what do we learn from from this? Some important lesson, living for life that was faithful, um, to. Faithful to to Jesus prepared Paul to to die well, um. The 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 song that says, it is well with my soul, was penned. From the 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 hand of somebody who would have experienced the loss of his business. Very valuable and and vital and successful business. Made a decision to to go elsewhere and losing members of his family. And still being able to paint the song, it is well. So it so so living a life that is faithful helps helps help us. To to get ready for for when we die, amen? Or when we are about to die. Um. Secondly, at the time of death, um, not before. Um, secondly, at the time of death, um, not before God gave him thine grace. So that he could glorify him in it, you know, oftentimes we hear about Christians who. Are sick for a period of time and they, and they get to a point where they said they are ready to go home. They're ready to meet the Lord, they're ready to, 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 to just give it all up. The person who is unsafe, sometimes, you know, fight and stray. To hold on to, to this life, the, the man, the woman who is a Christian, embrace death when it comes. With the assurance that God ultimately will be glorified. Thirdly, um, Paul is the great apostle of grace. Is, is considered to be a man of faith, a devoted disciple of Jesus Christ. Um, and he was not spared suffering and the brutality. Of death by beheading, you know, God would have preserved him. Through many situations, but there came a time when he had to face death. And death in a, in a most brutal way, but he stood up, amen? We may not face that, but we are required to stand up. For Jesus Christ wherever we go. Now, there are two scriptures here that, um, I want you to contemplate. One is from, um, well, both are from First Peter. Um, first one is from First Peter, um, chapter one, verse. Um, six through to seven, um. And so quickly you can look at that for me. All right, and then the second one is, um, First Peter. Chapter two, verse twenty to twenty-one. All right, so both are from the book of Peter, First Peter, to be specific. Um, so if, 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 if we, if we look at what it says here. Verse six of First Peter, it says, in this you rejoice. Though now for a little while, if necessary, you have been grieved by various trials. And he says in verse ten, so grieved by various trials, whatever those variety of trials are. And says, so that the tested genuineness of your faith more precious than gold. That punishes, that, so, sorry, that perishes though it is tested by fire. So your faith is, is, is seen like gold, that experience. That firing, so that the pureness of that gold can come out. And the writer here is saying that our faith is even more genuine than, than, than that of gold. And so it says that. May by, may be found to result in praise and glory and honor. At the revelation of Jesus Christ. All right, so when our faith is tested, the result of it. Is better than gold that has been refined by fire. And he says here that it results in the praise, glory and honor of Jesus Christ. Amen? So the rewards are, are ones that last forever. And now when we create the preciousness of gold, what it is, what it goes through. The writer here is lightning our faith unto that, the genuineness of our faith. When tried by the circumstances of life. Um, verse twenty, um, chapter two, twenty and twenty-one, it says, for what credit is it? If you sin and are beaten for it and you endure. But if when you do good and suffer for it, you endure. Here this, it says, this is a gracious thing in the sight of God. Verse twenty-one, for to this you have been called. Because Christ also suffered for you, leaving you an example. So that you might follow in his steps. So let me go back a bit, let me sit back a bit. Verse twenty says, what credit is it if when you sin, you are beaten? For it and enjoy, so when any man, any person commits a sin. And you are found out, whether it is a tongue lashing to cause you to correct your ways or. If it's something via the state, you are in prison for it and you endure whether. One year, two year, forty years, whatever the period, and you endure that. The Bible is now saying as a Christian, if we go through suffering and we endure it. The gift, the price is even better. And then the, and then the word of God says, why, why does all of this happen? It says, because Christ also suffered and he would have left an example for us. For us to follow, amen? So it, it is a part of the Christian journey. The difficulties, the challenges that we must face, but there is a way we fight through it. And that fight through is understanding who we are in God. Understanding that we maintain our faith through prayer, through reading of the word, through fellowship. That's how we maintain our faith. At the death of the apostles, the persecution and the suffering continued. Um, thirty, in three thirteen A D. Um, it says that the Western, um. Roman Empire and even the, the, the eastern part. There, there were instances where there were severe persecution. Sometimes it was, um, intermittent, um, but it persisted for many years and it was. Um, it was widespread. Now, why was it happening at that time? Um, I want to bring home some of these points. Here it says that there were a couple of notable, um, ex- exceptions. We had persecution was typically, it was something that took place whether locally or regionally. Um, it, it takes, it, it was intense in some circumstances. Um, and there were varied reasons for it happening. Now, on this side, we have three reasons why it took place at that time. One is. The, the, the Christians were considered to be atheists. We, we'll discuss why that is so. The, the second word there is cannibal, cannibals, cannibalism. Christians were seen as being cannibals. Um, they were also seen as people, people who were involved in incest. Now, if we talk about, um. Atheism, we know atheism to be, to be what? Anybody can just shout out an answer. When we talk about atheism, what, what is that?
Not believing that God exists.
Not, yeah, so why would Christians be labeled as not believing in a God? Because when Jesus Christ came, he preached a message that there was only one God, they were living in a. In a, in a, in a realm where there was polytheism, you had the open right to worship many gods. And so when Christianity came, it was a, 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 a direct hit. On the religious environment at the time, which was a very lucrative, um. Business, want of a better word, because there were taxes and so on, associated with. Open worship and the more gods you had, the more gods people service, the more money you could collect. And so when, you know, Christianity came and so, and said, listen, is one that we serve, right? They were no longer going to, to temples and so on, and paying these, these, these offerings and so on. And so it, it was seen as being offensive and it led to. Open punishment, cannibal, cannibalism, the fact that Christians, um, part take. A part took of the, the communion and they spoke about, um, drinking. The cup, which is representative of the blood of Jesus Christ. And eating the bread, which was representative of, um, the flesh. You know, it was, it, it was open in the society. To say that the Christians were eating flesh. Of other human beings and it led to persecution also, um. Incest, when, when Christians referred to each other as brothers and sisters and they lived. In communal settings, they were considered to be living in incestuous relationship. Coupled with a myriad of other things, they were persecuted. Um, and, and whenever persecution breaks out. There are those who buckle down and maintain their walk and there are others who flee. And it, it took a toll on them, but God would have used it to his advantage. You know, um, we would have said this earlier on, that the blood of the martyrs. Is the seed of the church, Tertullian would have said this famously in the third century. Um, in the fifth century and so on, and Jerome. Um, made a similar sin, um, statement a couple of years after he said persecution have made. The church of Christ grow, martyrdom have crowned it. You know, um, but during this, during the time, there are others who were. Um, who were turning quotes, they became apostates of the faith. You know, there are some who left and Jesus would have warned in his parable, parable of the sower. In Matthew thirteen, verse twenty and twenty-one, it says, as for what. Was sown on the rock, rocky ground, this is the one who hears the word. And immediately receives it with joy, yet he has no root in himself. And then it goes on to say, but endures for a while. Maintain the faith for a while, come to church for a while, you're on the choir for a while. But when tribulation comes, when persecution arises on the account of the word, on the account of the faith. Immediately he falls away. You know, sometimes the challenges come when we have devoted ourselves to a particular ministry. And because the challenge come, we leave, the word of God said, no, send your roots down a little deeper. And if we think about the story of the, of the, of the, the, the parable, it talks about the different grounds. And that the seed fell on, but the one that fell in stoning and, and the, and the, the soil, the good soil. Form roots, this is just another, um, excerpt from a particular book that I have. Um, Eucalyptus, we just give some documents in terms of what the ear- early church faced. Now, this eh, particular, um, account talks about the church in, in Carthage. Um, and how there was mass, um, apostasy. Um, and just look at a little portion that says, um, there were those with whom, um. With whom all this is fallen and passed out of memory. They did not even wait to be arrested before they went up. Or questioned before they made their dinner, many fell before the fight, many laid low without. Meeting the enemy, they did not even give themselves a chance of seeming. Seeming unwilling to sacrifice to idols. They ran to the marketplace of their own accord, they seized the death of their own will. As if they had always wished it. Um, embracing the opportunity which they had, um, fervently desired. So, so it's describing even in tough times, not always stay, there are some. Who will break under the pressure and fall away, you know? But encouragement to those of us who are here is that we abide in Christ. We abide in his, his, his will. Um, should persecution unexpectedly arise and we will discover that we have become. Soft, self-indulged, um, unwilling sometimes to sacrifice our reputation. Um, godly goods, lifestyle, um, possibly even our own lives in order. To be faithful to Christ. Remember what Christ said to the church in, um, Lusadia. He, he, he spoke about, um, you know, being hot or cold. You know, being comfortable, um, and here it says, I am rich and I've gotten riches. Um, and have needed nothing. You have nothing to worry about, sometimes the church, you know, gets a point where it could get so comfortable, right? Not knowing that you are wretched ones, miserable, poor, blind, naked. I come to you to buy from me gold refined by fire, there's a word again. That you may become rich and white garments, that you may clothe yourselves and that. The shame of your nakedness may not be revealed, it says, um. It, it speaks to, um, and eyes of, to anoint your eyes that you may see. And the writer goes on to say, that many, as many as I love, I reprove and change some. Be zealous therefore and repent. Behold, I stand at the door and knock. If anyone hears my voice and opens the door, then I will come into him. And I will dine with him and he with me. He who overcomes, I will give to him to sit with me on my throne. As I have overcome. Sat down with the Father on his throne. So we have this invitation, you know, that if we stay, if we overcome. Then we will be recipients of dwelling with Christ forever. Um, there is a, a short video that I want to just show. In, in just, into just, um, encapsulating what we have been talking about. You know, living this, this life, this Christian life. Um, this virtuous life, even in difficult times. And, you know, I could have used so many examples, we think about Job. Um, and what Job went through, we think about, um, Esther. And what she went through, we think about, um, Ruth. You know, living in difficult times and maintaining your, your, your Christian virtue. We are so, we have so many examples in the Bible, we think about Joseph. And what he was called to do, you know, today I was reflecting. and what he was called to do. You know, today I was reflecting even on, um, our own country. Um, and where we are now. Um, as a country, we have been praying for a long time. And, and, and I'm not making a political statement, people. I'm just thinking about, you know, our, our finance minister, the, the one that Nigel and the decision that he made to take out this cat bond. Um, and there's a lot of things on the internet to say. Um, you know, it seems like the storm was something that was man-made and, you know, it's a part of this big plan that they have to create these smart cities. But as I reflected, I remember God would have placed people like Daniel, people like Joseph in history at a point to preserve the nation of Israel and even others by giving them skills and insight, how to maneuver challenges, whether present or future, so that life could be preserved. And that's what I thought about, that yes, sometimes we, there are instruments that are designed to create a hope, but in the midst of it, God has a way of preserving and keeping his people, you know, um. And so as I thought about it, as a nation, we have been praying, Lord, give us good leaders. Give us leaders who can, can truly manage affairs of the country so that we will be better, we have better living conditions. When, when I look at the, some of the homes, um, it's tough conditions that the people live in. And so there has to be a way that the arm of government, that people can, can, can find a better way of living. Um, so that when things like these come, we don't have the challenges that we are seeing now. And also in other design, invite us to just really pray that God would give our leaders insights in how to create better living conditions for our people. And trust that he will use them for his, his own glory. Um, this, this is just a three-minute video of what possibly happened in the lives of these apostles. Um, it is self-explanatory, so I won't say much more, um, so you can just watch.
Does the Bible record the death of the?
Alright, so let me share my sound.
Apostles? The only apostle whose death the Bible records is James. King Herod had James put to death by the sword, likely a reference to beheading. The circumstances of the deaths of the other apostles are related through church tradition. So we should not put too much weight on any of the other accounts. The most commonly accepted church tradition in regard to the death of an apostle is that the apostle Peter was crucified upside down in Rome in fulfillment of Jesus' prophecy. The following are the most popular traditions concerning the deaths of the other apostles. Matthew suffered martyrdom in Ethiopia, killed by a sword wound. John faced martyrdom when he was boiled in a huge basin of boiling oil during a wave of persecution in Rome. However, he was miraculously delivered from death. John was then sentenced to the mines on the prison island of Patmos. He wrote his prophetic book of Revelation on Patmos. The apostle John was later freed and returned to what is now modern-day Turkey. He died as an old man, the only apostle to die peacefully. James, the brother of Jesus, not officially an apostle, was the leader of the church in Jerusalem. He was thrown from the southeast pinnacle of the temple, over a hundred feet down, when he refused to deny his faith in Christ. When they discovered that he survived the fall, his enemies beat James to death with a club. This is thought to be the same pinnacle where Satan had taken Jesus during the temptation. Bartholomew, also known as Nathaniel, was a missionary to Asia. He witnessed in present-day Turkey and was martyred for his preaching in Armenia, being flayed to death by a whip. Andrew was crucified on an X-shaped cross in Greece. After seven soldiers whipped Andrew severely, they tied his body to the cross with cords to prolong his agony. His followers reported that when he was led toward the cross, Andrew saluted it in these words, "I have long desired and expected this happy hour." The cross has been consecrated by the body of Christ hanging on it. He continued to preach to his tormentors for two days until he died. The apostle Thomas was stabbed with a spear in India during one of his missionary trips to establish the church there. Matthias, the apostle chosen to replace the traitor Judas Iscariot, was stoned and then beheaded. The apostle Paul was tortured and then beheaded by the evil Emperor Nero in Rome A.D. sixty-seven. There are traditions regarding the other apostles as well, but none with any reliable historical or traditional support. It's not so important how the apostles died. What is important is the fact that they were all willing to die for their faith. If Jesus had not been resurrected, the disciples would have known it. People will not die for something they know to be a lie. The fact that all of the apostles were willing to die horrible deaths, refusing to renounce their faith in Christ, is tremendous evidence that they had truly witnessed the resurrection of Jesus Christ.
Yes, so thank you. So as we bring the curtains down on our four-part study, um, there, there are two scriptures that we can reflect on. Um, Romans, chapter eight, verse fifteen through to, to eighteen. And then Romans eight, thirty-five through to, um, thirty-nine. Thirty-five through nine says, "You shall separate us from the love of Christ." "Shall tribulation?" It's a question we must ask ourselves. Or distress? So another question. Persecution, famine, nakedness, danger, sword? As it is written, "For your sake we are being killed all the day long." "We are regarded as sheep to be slaughtered." "Know in all these things we are more than conquerors to him who loved us." "For I am sure that neither death, nor life, nor angels, nor rulers, nor things present, nor things to come, nor pause, nor height, nor depth, nor anything else in all creation will be able to separate us from the love of God in Christ Jesus or Lord." Nothing. Um, the song says, "I pledge allegiance to the Lamb with all my heart, with, with all my, with all my strength, with all I am. I seek to honor his command. I pledge allegiance to the Lamb." And he says that, you know, there were Christians long ago who were brought before a tyrant's throne, and they were told that he would spare their lives if they would renounce the name of Christ. But one by one, they chose to die. The Son of God, they would not deny. Like a great angel choir sings, I can almost hear their voices ring. I pledge allegiance to the Lamb with all my strength, with all I am. I pray that as we live for Christ, we'll do it with all our strength and with all of who we are, knowing that nothing can separate us from the love of God. And that we are more than conquerors because he has loved us. I, I thank you for coming out tonight. Um, I would have prefer, preferred to be seeing you in person. Um, but it is what it is. So I give God thanks for the opportunity and pray that, you know, you would have gained a little bit more um, as a result of this study that we embarked on. And you are more emboldened, um, encouraged. Um, I've given some, some food for thought that would cause us to be more confident as we live for Christ. Bless you and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And I, I want to put on record our deep appreciation for the, the preparation that has gone into this. The, not just the preparation, but by way of study, but the preparation by way of prayer. Obviously, um, there, there is a wholesome bringing together of, of what we know from what we have read, but the application of it in, in our world today has just been, been refreshing and, and inspiring. Thank you, Reverend Wilson.
Thank you, sir, for the opportunity.
We, we now become stewards of, of what has been imparted to us. I wonder if there might be any questions from anybody. I wouldn't want to deny you the opportunity to ask a question. Is there something that might have been said, whether tonight or earlier, that is not clear to you? Um, some difficulty you have with something that was said? Anybody? Now it's a time to say it before we ask Minister Hillary to close in prayer for us. And any questions? Anybody? Minister Hillary, you hearing me? You, you are muted if you are hearing me. Alright. Mr. Silville, Mr. Clark? Are, are you hearing me? Okay. Let, let's go ahead to prayer. Father, we want to thank you for the privilege we have had for the last several weeks to look again at how we live out what represents you and what you are doing in our lives, the, the people you have called us to be. Father, we recognize that we can't do this on our own. But we have everything we need for life and for goodness through your Holy Spirit who is with us. We have, we have a comforter. We have a teacher. We have a, a, a guide. We have an encourager. We have a shield and defender. We have him who glorifies Jesus in us and through us. Lord, help us to walk worthy of this great gift, salvation that you have given to us. Thank you, Lord God, that through you we are more than conquerors. That you have purpose in our lives and even though we might endure hardship as good soldiers, we are still more than conquerors. Yes. Thank you, great God, for our brother Owen and how he has yielded himself to being led by you to, to inspire us. And it is true, you know everything from beginning to end. We, we know no timeliness like yours. You order our steps in every respect. Cause your blessing, cause your favor to abide with him and his household continually. Because oh God, that we who have benefited from this word over these last few weeks, we put them into practice and come to a new depth, a new height, greater joy and understanding of the purpose for which you've called us. Here our prayer we ask you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Good evening. Good evening, Rev. And good evening, everybody. Sorry. I was a bit distracted at the time. I was doing something and by the time I got through,
It's alright.
I had started. I'm so sorry.
That's alright. That's alright. Uh, just before we part, especially for the Tuknem uh, flock in this fold here this evening. Uh, we're going to begin receiving contributions towards the Melissa release effort. Uh, so by Sunday of this week, Sunday coming, we can begin bringing stuff in. And, and we're taking, we're taking clothing, we're taking, um, toiletries, we're taking tarpaulins, we're taking anything you feel led to give. We're taking things that you would want and that you would wear again and that you wouldn't, like I say, I think that you wouldn't mind getting if you were sleeping out in the open. Um, not knowing where another meal is coming from. And if you had to go to somewhere in an emergency, you would want to be seen in. So yes, that, that, that is a, a bit of information for us. And remember to that, while, while we are taking items, if you don't have an item that you want to part with, but you have some cash that you want to sacrifice for the, towards the recovery of people afflicted by the storm, affected by the storm. Please take it in if you're going to, um, send by electronic transfer. Please make a note on it, on the transfer, that it is Melissa relief. So it doesn't get, um, caught in general offering. Thank you very much. Have a good night. The Lord be with you all.